They're not on? Oh, there.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt this agenda dated October 30th, 2004. However, that we waive items two, three, four, and five.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered. Can the clerks please take more calls? Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Uggan. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duennius. Senator Limtiaco. Senator McCready. Senator Morrison. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Respecho. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Siniklas. Speaker Wampat. Senator Yamashita. Madam Speaker, there is a quorum. Thank you. Senator Respecho, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move that we excuse any senator that's not yet present for session.
On the motion, here your objections, so ordered.
There was an objection to my motion that we excuse any member not yet present for session? Madam Speaker, let the record reflect that there has been an objection. Should we vote on that objection?
Well, since there is an objection, yes, all the time we do have to call for the vote. So, all in favor then of excusing any member who's not currently present, but, you know, may walk in any time, please raise your hand. All in favor to excuse. All in favor to excuse. Because there were, to excuse, yes, because there's an objection, so overwhelmingly it's to excuse.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we approve the journal dated October 20, 21, 22, 23, and 24, 2014, subject to correction.
No objections, so ordered.
There are communications and petitions, and I move that they be penned at A session journal.
No objections, so ordered.
As well as messages from Imagallahi Guam, I also move that they be penned at A session journal.
No objections, so ordered.
As well as reports of standing committees, that they also be penned at A session journal.
No objections, so ordered.
And there's no reports of select committees, and so item 12, I move for the introduction and first reading of the following bills and resolutions. Bill number 416-32LS and bill number 417-32COR. Resolution numbers 486-32LS through resolution numbers 496-32COR and certificate numbers 199-32LS through certificate number 204-32COR be given its introduction and first reading.
No objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, my first motion, to which the basis to which you've, for which you've called us into this regular session, is on the matter of a bill introduced by Vice Speaker B.J. Cruz, 417-32. It's an act to appropriate funds from the supplemental appropriations revenue SAR fund for the payment of government of Guam employee and law enforcement personnel, unpaid overtime costs, and for other purposes. The Vice Speaker wrote you a letter earlier today asking you to waive the public hearing requirement, since this is substantially the same as the previous bill that was heard and presented before this body, and you responded immediately by granting the waiver of the public hearing and certifying that this bill meets one of the requirements set forth in 2103A of Title II Guam Code Annotated. And so I therefore move that we place bill 417-32 as introduced in the second reading file.
On that motion then, without any objections, so ordered.
And I also move that since this bill is an appropriation matter, that the standing rule requirement of a committee of the whole also be waived.
No objections, so ordered.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Vice Speaker, on bill 417.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'd like to move bill 417 to the third reading file and ask for an opportunity to speak.
You may proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, 417 is substantially, actually, it is almost exactly the same as bill 415 that we passed last week, with the exception that I've, in this bill, I've removed line 22 on bill 415, which reads, "With the exception of the FY 2014 overtime incurred in FY 214 by Guam Police Department employees assigned to the Imagallahi Guam's executive security detail in 2014." That was the only thing that was removed from 415, and for historical purposes, Madam Speaker, I had, in preparing a substitute version of 415, had a substitute that wanted to try to get to the bottom of how much was expended in executive security, and there was a bill that had all kinds of requirements for reporting and holding everything up until those reports were provided. After sleeping on it, I decided that I would not proffer that. I removed all of the provisions, I thought. I unfortunately did not remove this one last provision from the bill, and it got, it was passed with this one provision, so I asked my colleagues if we could just pass this with that one line, with those two lines removed, so that we can move forward and transmit this bill to Adalou. Thank you.
You're welcome. On the motion, Senator McCready.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I thank the retiring speaker, the Vice Speaker, for making this provision of the law in the section whole and making sure that everyone's involved. Could I get a one-minute recess, because I'm going to proffer an amendment, and I'm just writing it up now?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and I'll recognize you later, and I'll go ahead and call somebody else with an amendment. Okay, Senator, Senator Respecho, on the main motion. We're going to go into brief recess then. (pause) Everyone should have a copy of the amendment, the McCready amendment. Senator, then, you may continue, now that everyone has a copy. Senator, okay. On the McCready amendment. Senator Uggan, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the only issue I would bring up as a concern is making sure that the legislature is privy to any payment of prior year obligations as a result of this particular amendment, Madam Speaker, and I believe there may be a template that has been utilized in previous budget provisions that would meet that requirement. So I'm asking the sponsor of the amendment if by any chance he can insert that reporting requirement that the chief executive, prior to the payment of prior year obligations, notify the speaker and the chairman of the committee on appropriations of such action that will be undertaken. And that is for accountability purposes, not only on the part of the executive branch, but also the legislative branch and the appropriations committee. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Yes, Madam Speaker, absolutely fine, with me.
Senator Tom Ada, you're recognized on the amendment.
Madam Speaker, if the author would yield. I'm just curious, what is this prior year obligation that the fire department is trying to make good on, and is there any inkling as to what is going to be deferred from the 2015 budget? You know, we talk about, so we're taking from the front to pay something in the back, and then in 2016, we're going to take and just keep leapfrogging, so, but at the very least, do we have any clue as to what it is that we're trying to make good on, and what is it that we're going to be deferring, if the author would yield?
Senator McCready, do you yield to the questions?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I do, Madam Speaker, the original bill from the governor had $1.5 million for Guam Fire Department of their overtime cost. Now, we all know when the chief came in here, he explained to us that the system that we have doesn't see the 106 hours as straight time, it has to break it up into overtime. So therefore, we're reimbursing the general fund. It's pretty simple, and I'm not a mathematician, but I understand that when we don't reimburse this general fund, we're going to end up in the red down the line. So this is, this is something looking forward, and it was funny, because when the 50 or so officers were sitting outside.
Madam Speaker, my question's not being answered. My question was, no. Thank you very much, okay, thank you for yielding to my question. And, and let me just then continue with my, let me just continue then with my concern. Then, so, so the speakers, so the, so the mover of the amendment is saying that, that basically, we're going to take $1.5 million, or however much, from 2015 to make good to the general fund, otherwise, the general fund is going to be in the red. Well, it just seems to me then, in my mind, that when the decision was made to take $1.5 million from the general fund to pay for the, what's due to the firemen in GFD, that then the decision should have also been simultaneously made to defer $1.5 million worth of expenditures. But to have gone in and make a payment here, and then just go on and continue as if, as if presuming that we're going to get to this stage, then, you know, that's got to stop. But to me, I, you know, if, if, if this, if, if leaders were responsible, they would have transferred that $1.5 million from the general fund and deferred $1.5 million of expenditures from where it was coming from. So I just don't see that this is necessary. Thank you, and I object to the amendment.
On the amendment, have any other speakers? Senator Siniklas?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I just want to clarify a few things. First of all, the firemen have already gotten their overtime for fiscal year 2014. That was clarified in our previous session when we had them here on the committee of the whole. We asked very, very explicitly to the chief, "Chief, did all the firemen get their overtime?" And the answer was yes. What the chief was trying to do when he came down here and testified, and it was very admirable of him, was he was basically making a statement that the overtime was paid from the general fund, and now they're requesting it from the fire, for the fire department to pay back the general fund. Senator, the retiring speaker is absolutely correct. If the expenditure to pay for that overtime was going to be made, and it was knowingly made prior to the end of the fiscal year, then the budget should have effectively been reduced by $1.5 million somewhere in order to balance it out. What this amendment will do now, is it's going to take money from the fire department for this year to go back to the general fund, and really, when it goes back to the general fund, we don't know where it's going to go at that point, because we've already appropriated everything in the general fund for this fiscal year. So if we add back, if we, if we pass this amendment, we're basically saying, take from the fire department and give an extra $1.5 million to the general fund for FY 2015, and from there, they're going to be able to spend that money based on however they see fit. Now, the whole intention of the bill that we were entertaining, and this bill that we're entertaining now, is to make good to our public safety officers. We did so in the bill that we passed, and in this version, we did so not only for 2014, but looking ahead to 2015. We actually increased the amounts, in particular, for the Guam Police Department, to make sure they don't have to wait for overtime for fiscal year 2015. However, if we reduce the fire department budget with this amendment, we're doing the exact opposite of looking out for public safety for 2015. We're going to be shortchanging the fire department in 2015 to pay back the general fund, for reasons unknown. We haven't even gotten any, we don't even have an idea of what exactly was taken or shortchanged from the general fund in order to make this supposed payment. Now, just to clarify, for the benefit of everybody listening, the general fund and our budget is based on projected amounts, but our budget and our dollar, and our dollars can come in at an amount higher than that projected amount, and we've seen that actually happen with the Section 30 money that came in in August, when we had over $100 million in unanticipated Section 30 money come into the government of Guam. Now, that money was used to catch up for the tax refunds that were so delayed, and we wouldn't have been able to make those payments if it wasn't for that $100 million. That $100 million was also necessary for us to make good on the other 50% of the HEPA adjustment that we wouldn't have been able to make good on without that Section 30 money. So when all this additional money came in, it was also perhaps from that same source that we were able to make the payment for the fire department overtime. But to now turn around and say, pass this amendment, shortchange the fire department to pay back the general fund, that's just not, that's, that, that goes counterintuitive to the whole reason why we're passing this bill to begin with. So, the retiring speaker was absolutely correct. If this was an obligation that we were going to pay with 2014 money, or with the 2015 budget, we should have reduced the 2015 budget by that respective amount. But because that wasn't done, now we're going to target the Guam Fire Department's 2015 operations to pay for 2014 prior years? I think that the appropriate thing for us to do, if there is still an outstanding prior year obligation for any agency, including public safety, is for us to appropriate from an identified funding source to pay that specific prior year obligation. But we cannot take from this year to give back to the general fund when we've already closed out that fiscal year. I have a very difficult time understanding why we're going to shortchange the fire department this fiscal year when we've already closed out last fiscal year, unless the government really is hurting for money, and this amendment is intended to authorize taking from GFD now to make some kind of outstanding payment that's still pending. And if that's the case, I would like to know what that payment is, because why didn't we appropriate for it in the budget? So I join the retiring speaker, he's absolutely correct in objecting to this amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the amendment, Senator Respecho, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the only issue I would bring up as a, as a concern is making sure that the legislature is privy to any payment of prior year obligations as a result of this particular amendment, Madam Speaker, and I believe there may be a template that has been utilized in previous budget provisions that would meet that requirement. So I'm asking the sponsor of the amendment if by any chance he can insert that reporting requirement, that the chief executive, prior to the payment of prior year obligations, notify the speaker and the chairman of the committee on appropriations of such action that will be undertaken. And that is for accountability purposes, not only on the part of the executive branch, but also the legislative branch and the appropriations committee. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Yes, Madam Speaker, absolutely fine, with me.
Senator Tom Ada, you're recognized on the amendment.
Madam Speaker, if the author would yield. I'm just curious, what is this prior year obligation that the fire department is trying to make good on, and is there any inkling as to what is going to be deferred from the 2015 budget? You know, we talk about, so we're taking from the front to pay something in the back, and then in 2016, we're going to take and just keep leapfrogging, so, but at the very least, do we have any clue as to what it is that we're trying to make good on, and what is it that we're going to be deferring, if the author would yield?
Senator McCready, do you yield to the questions?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I do, Madam Speaker, the original bill from the governor had $1.5 million for Guam Fire Department of their overtime cost. Now, we all know, when the chief came in here, he explained to us that the system that we have doesn't see the 106 hours as straight time, it has to break it up into overtime. So therefore, we're reimbursing the general fund. It's pretty simple, and I'm not a mathematician, but I understand that when we don't reimburse this general fund, we're going to end up in the red down the line. So this is, this is something looking forward, and it was funny, because when the 50 or so officers were sitting outside.
Madam Speaker, my question's not being answered. My question was, no. Thank you very much, okay, thank you for, for yielding to my question. And, and let me just then continue with my, let me just continue then with my concern. Then, so, so the speakers, so the, so the mover of the amendment is saying that, that basically, we're going to take $1.5 million, or however much, from 2015 to make good to the general fund, otherwise, the general fund is going to be in the red. Well, it just seems to me then, in my mind, that when the decision was made to take $1.5 million from the general fund to pay for the, what's due to the firemen in GFD, that then the decision should have also been simultaneously made to defer $1.5 million worth of expenditures. But to have gone in and make a payment here, and then just go on and continue as if, as if presuming that we're going to get to this stage, then, you know, that's got to stop. But to me, I, you know, if, if, if this, if, if leaders were responsible, they would have transferred that $1.5 million from the general fund and deferred $1.5 million of expenditures from where it was coming from. So I just don't see that this is necessary. Thank you, and I object to the amendment.
On the amendment, have any other speakers? Senator Siniklas?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I just want to clarify a few things. First of all, the firemen have already gotten their overtime for fiscal year 2014. That was clarified in our previous session when we had them here on the committee of the whole. We asked very, very explicitly to the chief, "Chief, did all the firemen get their overtime?" And the answer was yes. What the chief was trying to do when he came down here and testified, and it was very admirable of him, was he was basically making a statement that the overtime was paid from the general fund, and now they're requesting it from the fire, for the fire department to pay back the general fund. Senator, the retiring speaker is absolutely correct. If the expenditure to pay for that overtime was going to be made, and it was knowingly made prior to the end of the fiscal year, then the budget should have effectively been reduced by $1.5 million somewhere in order to balance it out. What this amendment will do now, is it's going to take money from the fire department for this year to go back to the general fund, and really, when it goes back to the general fund, we don't know where it's going to go at that point, because we've already appropriated everything in the general fund for this fiscal year. So if we add back, if we, if we pass this amendment, we're basically saying, take from the fire department and give an extra $1.5 million to the general fund for FY 2015, and from there, they're going to be able to spend that money based on however they see fit. Now, the whole intention of the bill that we were entertaining, and this bill that we're entertaining now, is to make good to our public safety officers. We did so in the bill that we passed, and in this version, we did so not only for 2014, but looking ahead to 2015. We actually increased the amounts, in particular, for the Guam Police Department, to make sure they don't have to wait for overtime for fiscal year 2015. However, if we reduce the fire department budget with this amendment, we're doing the exact opposite of looking out for public safety for 2015. We're going to be shortchanging the fire department in 2015 to pay back the general fund, for reasons unknown. We haven't even gotten any, we don't even have an idea of what exactly was taken or shortchanged from the general fund in order to make this supposed payment. Now, just to clarify, for the benefit of everybody listening, the general fund and our budget is based on projected amounts, but our budget and our dollar, and our dollars can come in at an amount higher than that projected amount, and we've seen that actually happen with the Section 30 money that came in in August, when we had over $100 million in unanticipated Section 30 money come into the government of Guam. Now, that money was used to catch up for the tax refunds that were so delayed, and we wouldn't have been able to make those payments if it wasn't for that $100 million. That $100 million was also necessary for us to make good on the other 50% of the HEPA adjustment that we wouldn't have been able to make good on without that Section 30 money. So when all this additional money came in, it was also perhaps from that same source that we were able to make the payment for the fire department overtime. But to now turn around and say, pass this amendment, shortchange the fire department to pay back the general fund, that's just not, that's, that, that goes counterintuitive to the whole reason why we're passing this bill to begin with. So, the retiring speaker was absolutely correct. If this was an obligation that we were going to pay with 2014 money, or with the 2015 budget, we should have reduced the 2015 budget by that respective amount. But because that wasn't done, now we're going to target the Guam Fire Department's 2015 operations to pay for 2014 prior years? I think that the appropriate thing for us to do, if there is still an outstanding prior year obligation for any agency, including public safety, is for us to appropriate from an identified funding source to pay that specific prior year obligation. But we cannot take from this year to give back to the general fund when we've already closed out that fiscal year. I have a very difficult time understanding why we're going to shortchange the fire department this fiscal year when we've already closed out last fiscal year, unless the government really is hurting for money, and this, this amendment is intended to authorize taking from GFD now to make some kind of outstanding payment that's still pending. And if that's the case, I would like to know what that payment is, because why didn't we appropriate for it in the budget? So I join the retiring speaker, he's absolutely correct in objecting to this amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the amendment, Senator Respecho, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I have a completely opposite take from what the two retiring speakers have presented. My take is this amendment.
authorize taking from GFD now to make some kind of outstanding payment that's still pending. And if that's the case, I would like to know what that payment is, because why didn't we appropriate for it in the budget? So I join the retiring speaker, he's absolutely correct in objecting to this amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the amendment, Senator Respechel, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I have a completely opposite take from what the two retiring speakers have presented. My take is this amendment would recognize that the Guam Fire Department has prior year obligations, and statutorily will authorize the payment of these prior year obligations with GFD's existing budget. First of all, we understand how government of Guam budgets, and we understand, once we get to the end of the fiscal year, we understand that the reason why we don't allow this government statutorily to go back and pay for prior year obligations, because it would offset the current year appropriations. And so we want to kind of segregate those prior year obligations, recognize them, and work with the executive branch to identify what, from what resources these monies can be appropriated and pay them separately. I think what the mover of the amendment is trying to do is say, "We have to recognize today that there's at least $1.5 million worth of prior year obligations facing the Guam Fire Department, and as a compromise, use GFD's existing budget." And then we have to come back, just as soon as this thing is passed, and hopefully the governor signs it, that we have to come back as a legislature to ask the governor where he's going to identify this $1.5 million to cover the shortfall. Unfortunately, you know, because this government is such in a pay-as-you-go government, and we're in crisis mode, we can't really ideally project for how we're gonna run this government in terms of how we budget for this government. We can't be a cash-type system. All the monies that we appropriated are based on revenue estimates, and as the money comes in, the money goes out to all these different appropriations. I think by not including in this, by not including this amendment in this bill, simply would ignore the fact that we have prior year obligations to pay out of the Guam Fire Department. And I'm pleased that the mover of the amendment is not looking to appropriate from additional monies outside of the Guam Fire Department. And this matter was presented to us by the fire chief. This is boilerplate language that was used for the Department of Corrections. And I think if there's an opportunity to have GFD pay its vendors now, they should. Because whether we do this now, or we do this at some point, we're still gonna have a $1.5 million shortfall that we're gonna have to address. And so for me, as a member of the legislature, whenever there's an opportunity to address something right now, I think we should. Now, this is an opportunity for us to make good on our continued recognition that just because we've gone past the last fiscal year, that any monies that are still owed to all these vendors or employees in some cases, by way of overtime, they need to be made whole. And this amendment certainly goes a long way to providing for that kind of continued philosophy, that those who are owed by this government are made whole. And so I thank you for the opportunity to express a different perspective and to write in support of the amendment.
On the amendment, is there anybody else who would like to speak? They're being none. Of course, yes, you. Yes, it's a separate. Please speak into the mic, and you can't just say you're adding it, you need to, if you want to add that amendment, it needs to be put in writing.
Sure.
So I'll give you a brief recess then to write that.
I understand that Senator McCready's still working on an amendment. We'll open the floor for Speaker Wampat to speak on the amendment. Speaker Wampat, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, as I read the amendment, I have several concerns, and, you know, I was listening very intently to several of our colleagues who stood up and spoke and gave, you know, different perspective, of course, in terms of how they were looking at the amendment. And what I'm reading from this, although it is silent, it's silent in the sense that it does not give a dollar amount, because in the original, E.S. 415, it was $1.5 million. And fortunately, with, when we were in the committee of the whole, we were able to get from the chief, and I applaud him, you know, for being very frank and honest with the body, by saying, of course, that, yes, they were short, they needed the money to make their workers, their firemen and women, to pay them for overtime, or I guess, in this case, they were saying, when you built in that full amount of 106 hours, that that amount was paid. And was paid, and that they had gotten the money from the governor's authority, which the legislature every year authorizes the governor to be able to make any transfer within the executive branch up to 15%. And the $1.5 million then was a transfer to help GFD make good on paying for the overtime of their men and women. What the chief also said, and this is where I applaud him, that he could have just said, you know, "Yeah, we didn't pay for it, we need to," but he was saying, "Yes, they were paid." So that was done. But he said what the request was, is to try to reimburse now the general fund. So that means the gov, and, you know, and this is something that's never been practiced in all the years that I've been in this legislature, that we give 15% transfer authority, and then that's it. You just, of course, withhold then that dollar amount that you've transferred, whether it's from one whole department or other departments, a combination of departments, to come up to that dollar amount of $1.5 million. And you just scratch that off, you subtract it, from all the general fund appropriations that was done for 2014. So that's done. And we've left, the train has left last year already. However, in this bill, or 415 and 417, is that we have identified monies that have not been appropriated, monies from about $1.6 million from the 2007 Series A bonds that's available from interest, you know, other than the different departments and agencies who have monies, like DOE still has a balance of about $1.6 million yet to draw down, UOG had monies to draw down, DISIT had monies to draw down, and so forth. But then the balance there, according to GIDA, told us then that from the interest there was about, I think, $1.4, $1.5, $1.7, okay, $1.7 million that's available. So, then that's the first cash, so to speak, that's in the bank. I mean, that's real cash, $1.7 million that's available. Now, we knew, starting on, that we're gonna need about $4 million. But as we started to bring in the different departments and agencies, we realized that there were others that we needed to address, customs and quarantine, and then the judiciary. So we took all those into consideration. The second funding source that was recommended for in this bill was to take monies from the tourist attraction fund. And these were monies, of course, that had not, again, been appropriated, and you, Madam Speaker, had been very gracious, knowing, of course, the situation in which the government is in, and knowing, of course, and wanting to make sure that we pay all of our law enforcement, you know, people. And, you know, and I appreciate that, and I applaud you for that. It's not an easy thing when we're trying to keep monies that were collected by certain industry to support the industry, but yet we're doing it. So, and that was good. So then we decided then to fund that as well. These are new monies. These are monies that has not been appropriated. To me, what this amendment now is doing, it is not addressing new monies. It's addressing what was appropriated to the Guam Fire Department. So that means the Guam Fire Department now can take its budget today, that's appropriated for this fiscal year, and now go back one year. And it's not to go back to pay their own people for last fiscal year, it's to go back and pay the general fund $1.5 million. What that would do then, again, now, is short the Guam Fire Department. So it's not taking $1.5 million from anywhere, 'cause I thought that that was the original language, to get $1.5 million from GBB, from TAF, from TFF, from the accountancy account, from Territorial Education Facilities Fund, from Healthy Futures Fund. Those are all types of funds that have monies very specific to what its mission is called for. This is $1.5 million that will come from GFD to pay back the government, the general fund. Now, the legislature, again, this fiscal year, authorized the governor an additional, again, every year, 15% transfer authority. And every year, since the governor has been in, to be able then to budget and to find, fiscally be responsible, to live within their means, have been withholding 15% from departments and agencies as well. And we had to be very strict about it, like, at least specifically for DOE, we said we didn't want it to be 15%, that only 3%. So that's 15% again, that many times, as we go along, depending on their needs, whether they can live within the means that the governor has set for them, even at the additional 15%. And if they do, then it's more power, of course, to the governor in this sense, 'cause then now he has 15% of that dollar amount to use for whatever special projects he has, versus giving it entirely to the department or agency. So this is a lot of money we're talking about here, but worse off is that I don't support the idea of taking any money at all from GFD. We know that they need more officers. And monies were provided to assist in that area, and it's not even going to be enough to get them to the level in which we would expect our men and women to be out there to provide, you know, for the services that they offer, to protect, you know, property and protect lives as well. They're gonna be short, and they're gonna come back again. They're gonna have to come back again. So it's every time we give them money, 'cause we want them to be whole. This is the first time this year that we actually gave more money than was requested for public safety and education and health. We made those three a priority, so we gave them more, because we keep saying they need more. But to go back, I think it's unconscionable to go back and say, "All right, you guys, use your this year fiscal budget and go back and pay the general fund." That's not setting a priority for the fire department, by allowing that, those monies, $1.5, to be used elsewhere for the general fund. It's not for GFD. And then, when they come back here next year, everybody knows that's one area we don't wanna play around with. We don't wanna risk any property, we don't wanna risk any life. So therefore, we want to support, and we always support, and we always provide the funding. So we're gonna be short. So this is like truly robbing Peter to pay Paul type of thing. But Paul will probably be able to survive, but Peter can't. And why do we give this transfer authority, when in essence, you know, we wanna get it from the fire department? So that's my perspective. I see that in a different way as well from everybody else. There's so much flexibility in this current budget of 15% transfer authority that the governor has. There's so much flexibility as well that the governor has when he imposes a 15% reserve from departments and agencies. So I don't see the need for this 1.5% up to, although, yes, the lang, it's silent, but we all know in the original bill was 1.5, and that's exactly in his testimony, the chief's testimony, that it was 1.5, to reimburse the general fund. So I object to this amendment.
Speaker Wampat. Senator White, anybody else on the amendment? If not, Senator McCready, you can close.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I would like to proffer a, some more language that was given to me by the good senator from Jotunia. After appropriations, period, on Section 12, Line 12, Page 5 of the bill, after appropriations, I would also like to add, I, Magalayan Guahan, shall transmit a report on any prior year obligations to be paid in accordance with the provisions of this subsection to the speaker and the chairman of the committee on appropriations of Lees Lutur in Guahan within five-
Senator, you're gonna have to write that out and have copies made for everyone. It's a very long amendment, it's not easy to follow. So we're gonna take a recess. The legislature's back in session. Senator McCready, you have the floor. I think everyone has a copy of their written amendment.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Line 12, Page 5, at the end of appropriations, I, Magalayan Guahan, shall transmit a report on any prior year obligations to be paid in accordance with the provisions of this subsection to the speaker and the chairman of the committee on appropriations of Lees-
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm very curious now, what are these prior year obligations? If the fire department has already paid the overtime, then there is no prior year obligation to overtime. So what prior year obligations is everybody referring to? One of the retiring speakers mentioned vendors, so what vendor hasn't been paid? I'm curious what prior year obligations now we're trying to fund? And if this language is to require the governor to submit a report prior to us paying it, why can't we just see what it is that's owed? What's actually owed for prior year obligations? Because, Madam Speaker, if we've already paid the overtime, then that's not a prior year obligation. And there's no such thing as having a prior year obligation to the general fund. So what is the prior year obligation? What does the fire department owe that's outstanding for 2014? Who do they owe? Which vendors or which personnel didn't they pay? I would like to request that we, or I'd like to ask the author of the amendment, what prior year obligations have we not paid for the fire department?
Senator, do you owe to the question? He does not.
So I would like to request then that the information be provided, what prior year obligations are outstanding. I mean, technically, because the amounts are even open-ended, it could entirely wipe out the fire department budget theoretically. There is no dollar limit. So what prior year obligation is outstanding?
Is there anybody who can answer the question? Okay, we're going to take a brief recess and make the phone call to the chief. Senator McCready, you have the floor. I think everyone has a copy of their written amendment.
I would like to request then that the information be provided, what prior year obligations are outstanding. I mean, technically, because the amounts are even open-ended, it could entirely wipe out the fire department budget theoretically. There is no dollar limit. So what prior year obligation is outstanding?
Is there anybody who can answer the question? Okay, we're going to take a brief recess and make the phone call to the chief. I know that we had left off with a question to get some answers from the chief of police, but during the recess... I mean, fire, I'm sorry. There was some discussion that took place, and I would, if it's okay, Senator Suniclas, if I would recognize then the vice speaker, I understand that he might have a bridge to provide.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the intent of this bill was to address prior year outstanding overtime obligations of the various law enforcement agencies. So I think just to make it clear, and there's no question that we're going to be paying vendors or anything else, I think we just put in outstanding prior year, I mean, the...
Prior year outstanding?
After year, put outstanding GFD overtime obligations.
Okay, on the amendment, no objections? Wait, so that will be for, wait, 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 I want to make sure, because we were on the amendment to the amendment, the handwritten one? So... Oh, you're right. So we'll write there where it says prior year to add the words, the same words, and then to do it on the main amendment. Okay? Does everybody understand that? On the handwritten, where it says prior year outstanding GFD overtime obligations in the amendment, and then on the handwritten, and then the main amendment, they would do the exact same thing. Okay. So then for the, we do, since everybody, oh, Senator, on the handwritten amendment.
Well, I'm just wondering, with the amendment that now the prior year obligation is more specifically focused on overtime payments, then really it seems to obviate the need for the handwritten amendment for the report, because I think that the handwritten amendment was being made because we didn't have a clue what this prior year obligation is. So it seems then to make this requirement, you know, really now moot. So maybe, maybe the move or the amendment would be willing to just withdraw.
Okay, I understand. So, but it was written, I know by Senator Agun, but it was proffered by Senator McCready. So between the two of you, is there any objection to just deleting the handwritten reporting requirements?
It's prior year outstanding GFD.
Yes. So no objections then to the deletion of the handwritten amendment? So ordered. Now, then, on the main motion, the McCready amendment, the vice speaker then proffered that after the word prior year, to add the words outstanding GFD overtime obligations. Are there any objections to the amendment? They're being non-so ordered. Thank you very much. Now, is there anybody else who would like to speak in the main motion? Senator Respejo on the main?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I passed out an amendment that I prepared, which is taken word for word from a letter and a copy of a bill that was submitted to my committee this morning at a status hearing, which was attended by Senator Elina Maschida. We've asked the status hearing, Madam Speaker, over the last several months on two issues. One issue was the status of the permitting for the proposed animal quarantine facility, but more specifically in this case, we asked for a status hearing. Sorry.
I am so sorry, Senator.
No problem.
You're right. I mean, because, can I just make some clarifications first of all? Just everybody's all together, and I was discussing with the clerk, is that the handwritten amendment, we've deleted. Everybody's understood that. Okay. Then, when we went to the main motion, proffered by Senator McCready, was to add the vice speaker's words outstanding GFD overtime, and there was no objection to that. So then now would be the call, would be the amendment to the amendment. And are there any objections then to the new section 12? Clerk, so that's the correct? Okay. Thank you very much. No objections. So ordered. Thank you. Senator Respejo, I'm really sorry.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, as I was saying, we've been asking the director of the Department of Agriculture, what is the status of the compensation to farmers for crop damages? As you know, this legislature, through the efforts of the late Speaker Pangolinan and us, we provided an appropriation to the governor, which eventually was item vetoed. And from then, we just kept asking the director of agriculture, how come the Department of Agriculture is not moving forward to pay for damages, crop damages, that our farmers are experiencing? And so in the status hearing this morning, we, our committee received a letter from the director. She attached a proposed bill that she was saying in order for the governor to move forward to paying the $400,000 required, that the administration's recommending that we simply give him the authorization. Now, maybe there's a blessing in everything that happens, and things happen for a reason in that we're in session this afternoon, and I think it's incumbent upon us to seize this opportunity. And I just don't want to go back and forth. I don't want to keep saying that the governor has this transfer authority, he should use it. I don't want the administration to keep saying that he needs the authorization and that he needs it. I just want to present what they asked us to do by way of passing this bill, and since we do have an appropriation bill before us, I've taken that draft language and copied it word for word, and now I'm offering it as a floor amendment, which would read, "Notwithstanding any provision of law, I, Magalayan Guahan, is hereby authorized to identify funding from any available resources up to the amount of $400,000 for the Department of Agriculture to compensate farmers for crop damages from Typhoon Halong 11W. Such sums identified are hereby appropriated to the Department of Agriculture for the purposes stated herein." So we leave it to the governor, since he's asking us to do this through his director, to identify $400,000 from the existing budget. Now, I know the difficulty even I have, and I recognize in presenting this kind of language for our consideration, is that we're waiving any previous law, just one failed blanket appropriation, and we don't know at the end of the day where this money's going to come from. But I'm asking that since we're in session, if we don't, if we don't bring this issue up publicly, if we don't pass this amendment in this bill that we're going to present to the governor, I could see an political opportunity this coming weekend to say that the legislature did not act on the farmers' needs. And I want to, as the way you do and all of us in here, I want to de-politicize everything we're doing, and just so that people understand that if this is what the governor's asking us to do, no matter what the arguments are for or against, I'm proposing that we put this language in this bill, and we leave it to the governor to identify from whatever funding source, to be sure that they compensate our farmers accordingly. And so I submit this to the body for its consideration. I ask... I don't want to keep saying that the Governor has this transfer authority, he should use it. I don't want the administration to keep saying that he needs the authorization and that he needs it. I just want to present what they asked us to do by way of passing this bill, and since we do have an appropriation bill before us, I've taken that draft language and copied it word for word, and now I'm offering it as a floor amendment, which would read, notwithstanding any of the provision of law, Imagalan Guahan is hereby authorized to identify funding from any available resources up to the amount of $400,000 for the Department of Agriculture to compensate farmers for crop damages from Typhoon Halong 11W. Such sums identified are hereby appropriated to the Department of Agriculture for the purposes stated herein. So we leave it to the Governor, since he's asking us to do this through his Director, to identify $400,000 from the existing budget. Now, I know the, the difficulty even I have, and I recognize in presenting this kind of language for our consideration, is that we're waiving any previous law, just one fell blanket appropriation, and we don't know at the end of the day where this money's going to come from. But I'm asking that since we're in session, if we don't, if we don't bring this issue up publicly, if we don't pass this amendment and this bill that we're going to present to the Governor, I could see an opportu, political opportunity this coming weekend to say that the legislature did not act on the farmers' needs. And I want to, as the way you do and all of us in here, I want to de-politicize everything we're doing, and just so that people understand that if this is what the Governor's asking us to do, no matter what the arguments are for or against, I'm proposing that we, we put this language in this bill, and we leave it to the Governor to identify from whatever funding source, to be sure that they compensate our farmers accordingly. And so I, I submit this to the body for its consideration, and I ask for unanimous consent.
On the amendment, Senator Yamashita, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for allowing me the opportunity to stand in full support of the amendment proffered by, by Senator Respecho. Madam Speaker, you know, this morning, it is correct, that we had maybe, maybe nine farmers in front of us, and it was a repeat, a repeat, a repeat, a repeat of their dilemma, their situation, their predicament, of the result of, of the great rainfalls that we have been experiencing lately. And, and for me, it was, you know, I, I'm trying to figure out why we're always back to this point. And so, as the mover of this amendment said, sometimes it's, I mean, the front office is saying they need the authority to expend it, and I was talking to some of the farmers, and I was saying, well, maybe we can do it so that you don't have to keep coming back. But at the same time, I was thinking, well, then that's the way, you know, I've listened to many in this hall talk about checks and balances, and maybe that's the way checks and balances works. We keep an eye on how much money is really being requested and who's getting it. There were a lot of pointed issues raised this morning. A lot of them were very angry, very angry. And so between the Chair of this committee and myself, we were taking notes, and I'm sure that we will have more meetings, oversight, roundtables, and not even roundtables, I think oversight meetings, to talk about how are we supporting them and what do we need to do better. As I left the legislature, the parking lot meetings were even more intriguing, and there the farmers shared some more issues that I am going to study and see what we can do to further help them. But at this time, this amount of money is being identified by the Director of Agriculture to help. Apparently, all the documents are in place, the processing has occurred, and the Department of Agriculture or the Governor is waiting for authority to process these claims and get the monies back into our farmers, so they can back into their lands and back and further farm and work with the land. And so I further support this, but I do acknowledge there are, I think, processes that we perhaps can do better at, at all levels. So I support this. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On, on the amendment, Senator Siniklis, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I too rise in support of the amendment, and I rise in support of it in the memory of our late colleague, Speaker Benn, and his bill number 230, 223-32, which was line item vetoed. That, that particular line item would have appropriated the sum of $790,000 for the compensation to farmers for crop damages, and for the crop damages program established pursuant to Chapter 64A of Title V of the Guam Code annotated. You know, we're a week away from a very, less than a week away from a very important day, but it's also important for us to, to remember that this work, some of this work, a lot of this work was done months ago, and we could have overwritten this detail months ago. It could have been signed months ago. But putting it in as an amendment at this time will get it finally for our farmers, and I fully support it, and I thank the author of the amendment for proffering it at this opportune time, so we can finally get this through in memory of our late colleague. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the amendment, anybody else who would like to speak? Senator Frank Ogun, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I too would like to stand in support of the proposed amendment, and just highlight part of the process that took place shortly after the storm had passed the island community. And that's where the Guam Homeland Security Office had coordinated and facilitated much of the planning in terms of reaching out to the executive branch agencies, and instructing them to go out and actually conduct the assessments, inclusive of the agricultural industry. So as a result of all of the information that they were able to compile, they presented it to the Chief Executive. The Chief Executive presented his request to FEMA, and that's where the, I guess, I don't want to say backlog, but that's where some of the waiting has taken place in regards to the compensation of, and the reimbursements by FEMA to the Government of Guam for some of these costs that were incurred as a result of that storm. So, Madam Speaker, I recognize that process, but I also stand in direct recognition of our farmers. We have to identify a process, whether it's an emergency authorization that's extended to the Chief Executive in situations such as this, where there's an emergency declaration, and then shortly thereafter, allow the farmers to be paid much quicker, so that we shorten the timeline, allow them to go back out to the field, to talk, to do all the toiling, the tilling of the soil, and as well as the preparation and the planting and whatnot, so that they can get their process going again. You know, the last time that we had considered a provision such as this, there was a question that was raised about the Government of Guam stepping in and providing that additional support. Yes, because this is one of our local industries that we need to continue to provide support to our farmers, so that they can in turn provide fresh produce and vegetables to our island community. And that's a tremendous service, and it requires a lot of added effort and work in terms of being able to continue to farm on a regular basis, considering the rainy season as well as the dry season. So, Madam Speaker, I stand in support of this, recognizing the process, and commend the sponsor of this amendment in terms of moving forward with at least the authorization to get together with our farmers. The cost has already been identified in terms of the receipts and whatnot from the respective farmers, and then compensate them for the crops that they have previously lost, so that they can go on and continue to do what they do best, and that is to farm and to provide produce and vegetables to our island community. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. Senator Munia Barnes, you're recognized.
Sejuus Maasi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I just want to stand in support of this amendment, and I want to thank the good author who presented this amendment. I truly believe, or I thought, and I believed, that this was taken care of after the farmers had the opportunity to speak with us, and we had gone through this process to see what we could do for helping them, and I appreciate the good Senator from Timuining for sharing what the farmers shared with them this morning, shared with her and Senator from Agania Heights this morning. And I just want to say that as we look at providing the resources to these farmers who were affected or devastated by Typhoon Halong, I, I want to say that, again, we need to be able to show the farmers that they're not forgotten. Farming is one of the most basic things, Madam Speaker, that, that we need to support here. We have a campaign out there that says buy local, think local, support local. This is one way of saying that we support our local farmers, and we do it right away. And, and I, I just want to say I'm sorry that this wasn't done any earlier. So I stand and rise in full support of this amendment. Sena Maasi.
You're welcome, Senator. On the amendment, Senator Respecho to close, or you want to send it on? So are there, is there any objection to the amendment? No objection? So ordered, thank you. Senator Respecho, can I have you take us back to motions, so that we need to do the congratulatory and condolences? You're right, because we didn't, we didn't do it. I mean, unless there's nothing else that anyone here else is, would like to speak before he does that motion. So then, so then there's no objection to, let me just take it down? No, no objection then to take it down to...
Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we revert back to motions.
Okay, so an objection so ordered, thank you, Senator.
So under motions, I move that any resolutions of condolence or congratulatory nature that's introduced for today's session, that be adopted, that it be adopted, that the sponsor work with the clerk and the legal counsel to prepare these documents, and that all senators be co-sponsors.
Okay, so on that motion, no objection, so ordered, thank you.
So notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we revert to the voting file, and that we vote on this bill without engrossment.
Thank you. On that motion, no objection, so... So if I can ask, can we please make sure our members are here? Okay, if we can have the clerk, please read Bill Number 417-32COR.
Bill Number 417-32COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by B. J. F. Cruz, and that to appropriate funds for the supplemental appropriations revenue fund for the payment of government of Guam employee and law enforcement personnel unpaid overtime costs and for other purposes.
We'll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Ogun. Senator Ogun, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duenez. Senator Duenez, aye. Senator Luntiaco. Senator Luntiaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison.
Okay, all right, we'll continue. Thank you, Senator, for your understanding and patience for that brief interruption. Yeah, one second and two audio is on, okay.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye.
Bill Number 417-32COR, as amended on the floor, received 14 ye votes. Bill Number 417-32 duly passed by this body. Thank you very much, Senators. Senator Respecho, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker and colleagues. Although we are experiencing power outage, and we're not on island power, and our session is not being televised at this moment, we do certainly have a legislative record that continues to be open and would be able to record all our proceedings. Before I call on a motion that we adjourn subject to the call of the Speaker, I just want to call to this body's attention, and to the attention of the people of Guam, that the Attorney General responded to my request of him to look into a matter that was happening in one of our executive branch agencies, where employees were told that in order for them to vote on Tuesday, that they're encouraged to vote either on their off-duty hour, or they were encouraged to sign leave and get an prior approval 24 hours prior to the election. So the Attorney General responded, Madam Speaker and colleagues, by saying that that directive should be rescinded, and that on Tuesday, although it's not a holiday, every single employee, whether an employee of the Government of Guam or the private sector, has a right to take up to two hours to vote, and their employer has no say-so as to what time they would go and vote. And so the Attorney General made that ruling, and he was very clear, and I think we should continue to do as we can as a body to encourage that every voter goes out and vote, that we do everything we can as a body to avoid any attempts of voter suppression, and that we continue to do everything we can as a body to provide for a free and fair election in this territory. So having said all of that, I want to move that we adjourn subject to your call, but recognize that we have very important events coming up, beginning with tomorrow, and then we have All Souls Day, All Saints Day, Monday's a holiday, and Tuesday we have our Super Tuesday general election. So, Madam Speaker and colleagues, I move that we adjourn, and hopefully we won't have to come back to session until after Tuesday.
Thank you, you're right. So, good luck to everybody, and we are adjourned subject to the call of the Speaker.